Brian, if you're there, I have just an American flag without the words this evening because I think you're a good leader and the words throw everyone else up. So it'll just be the flag waving.
Well, thanks for that pressure, Jim.
Oh, there we go.
Hello, Gail.
Hello. I just had to start the video.
Here's Michelle.
Hello.
Hi, Michelle.
Hello.
Oh, my goodness. Been a bunch of people during.
Carl, just so you're on deck, we have two minutes. So I don't, I'm planning on Tim, but you never know with what he's got going on with his plan right now. So.
It's fine.
Glad to see y'all could join us tonight.
Hey.
Hey, down.
All right, I'm gonna go to a, to a screen share here. We just have the waving American flag when we do get started, I think.
Evening, Mrs. Severs. Oh, I, she probably can't talk right now, but I know Alicia.
Hello.
Well, it is seven o'clock, so I will call to order council regular session, Monday, July 19, 2021. Uh, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance, Mr. Mallory, when you see the flag.
Try to. Okay, here it goes. Apology means to the flag of the United States of America.
Republic.
For which it stands.
One nation. Indivisible, liberty.
Thank you very much. We'll take a moment of silence. And then, Mr. Mallory, when you're ready, if you could take roll call, please.
I just find it ironic, we have Cultural Arts Center on and we articulated that as nicely done. So we'll start with our, we'll start with our moment of silence. And for tonight, uh, the roll call trustee Wagner.
Here.
Trustee Olson.
Here.
Trustee Keller.
Here.
Trustee Holmes.
Here.
Trustee Reaster.
Here.
Trustee Merrill.
Here.
She Merrill, damn, President Frisbee.
Here.
Okay.
We have a full house. Uh, we have the agenda in front of us for tonight, and I see genders. This, uh, we have Alicia Severs, the director of the Vicksburg Culture Arts Center. She's with us tonight. And the second is a quote to repave between Washington and Prairie.
Yes, sir.
Where would you want to put those at, Jim?
Um, if we can, under public official appearances, have the Cultural Arts Center under seven and under, um, 10A have Kalamazoo Avenue between Washington and Prairie, and that will be a council action item.
Very good. Are there any other changes that you need to note, or does any of the council members have any additions they want? Um, hearing done, uh, we have an agenda in front of us. Um, what is the pleasure of the council?
Trustee Keller moved to approve is amended.
Trustee Reaster, second. Whoever.
I caught, uh, trustee Keller made the motion to approve the agenda as amended, seconded by trustee Reaster. Hearing, uh, no, the roll call vote trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Olson.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Keller.
Yes.
Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
President Frisbee.
Yes. So we have an agenda in front of us. Believe we had any scheduled appearances or, uh, any other public officials on the call, Mr. Jim?
No, no public officials this evening.
We'll have, uh, open that up then at this time for Ms. Sid Bezos and Alyssa Severs to good evening, Sid. I didn't see you on there until I saw your smiling face just now. Thank you. So I'll turn the floor over to you. If you could just give us an update and introduce Mrs. Severs.
She needs to unmute.
I, I'm unmuted, but I think, uh,
Yeah. I, yeah, I think Sid, Sid's gonna unmute here. She's.
I'm, I'm unmuted. Thank you. I, Alicia, I sent you a text message saying I was gonna introduce you, but I don't know that you got it. So, um, first of all, okay. First of all, I'm not gonna, um, give you a lot of her credentials. We did not coordinate this, uh, so I'm not sure what Alicia had planned, but I did want to let you know she started with us uh, April, uh, sorry, June 21st, and even before she started with us, she was already hitting the ground running. Um, she's a great connector of people. I know she's met quite a few of you already, uh, in the short time she's been with us, and we're real, real happy to have her. Um, this happened in large part, uh, because of some confidence with the Vicksburg Foundation, saying that they were willing to fund uh, two years of a, a portion of her salary to help really get this, uh, organization, uh, well under control. Uh, being able to have Alicia in the credentials that she has and the experience she has is gonna make a very big difference uh, for this fledgling arts organization. So, uh, we are just really thrilled. You will, um, all of you will experience at some point in uh, your time with the village, some secret sauce she has. She actually has several different recipes that she uses and pulls out regularly. Uh, yeah, that, uh, will really make a difference, and, uh, we are just really thrilled to have her. So I'm gonna turn that over to Alicia so she can tell us a little bit more about what's going on.
Well, I'm so grateful for this time because I know that your meetings are packed and, um, that you have a lot to cover. So I won't take too long, but I really wanted to thank you for giving us a little bit of time. Um, and I wanted to just start by announcing to you that this is a really great time for the arts in Vicksburg. And in the month that I've been here, I've been, um, trying to meet with as many people as possible, and I hope that I'll still get a chance to meet with many of you that I haven't have a chance to talk with yet. Um, but I am really impressed by the support for the arts from this community and by the hunger and for all types of artistic experiences and cultural experiences. It's been really exciting to see that. And when I first came in, I wanted to make sure that I went on a listening tour to kind of find out what Vicksburg needs. And one of the reasons I did that was because when I was a trustee for the Portage District Library for nine years, whenever we started a strategic plan, we would always ask, um, what does the community need? You know, not like, what do we want to do with the library and what are our big, you know, fancy plans for, um, our library and things like that? It was, let's start first with what does the community need, and then we base our programming on that. And so I thought you might be interested to know, as I've been going around and talking with people, what they've been saying about what Vicksburg needs. And one of the things that's kind of interesting is that a lot of people said, I don't know. I think, I can't really think of anything. So that must mean you're doing something well because they don't, don't have a bunch of complaints in their mind about, wow, Vicksburg needs this, this, and this. So kudos for you that people can't think of anything that Vicksburg needs. That's a good sign. Um, but some of the other things that I've been hearing is a hunger for arts in all of its forms. Um, a lot about activities for families. A lot of interest in, um, making sure that the families in the new housing are integrated into, um, Vicksburg so that we are one community. Um, I've heard some concerns about the growth in Vicksburg that people want to keep the small town feeling in Vicksburg, and I think that that really means that people feel like they know their neighbors. Um, and that they feel connected with the town because that's the pleasure of being in a small town. At least I noticed that when I'm trying to cross Main Street and with Sid and I meet three different people and it takes us an hour to go across the street. So I know that that's, I think that's what people are thinking, you know, that feeling of connection. And I, and I think that overall, um, most of the people that I've talked to, um, really are hungry for connection. I think a lot of people are lonely from the pandemic and are excited to be able to get back together and, you know, re-strengthen their community identity. So those were some of the things that I've been hearing about what the region needs, and I'd be interested to hear later when we're not in the, in a meeting from any of you who I haven't spoken with yet about what your opinion is about that because I'm sure that some of you have from your perspective, some more things to add. So the conversation's not over. We're just beginning to survey what the needs are. But one of the other things that I asked was what, um, do the artists and the creatives need in this community? And it's not a surprise that they want money because they need to feed, you know, like they need money for their glazes and their, um, their, their glass and their clay and their kilns and all other things. So, um, one of the things that I think that they need is attention drawn to their work so that they have more opportunities to sell their work so that they can continue to make more work. Um, but one of the other things that I've been hearing from when I'm talking to artists is that they feel a need for community just like everybody else. And I'll, um, I'll get close to wrapping up now by just telling you a little story I heard from Cindy Creel at Prudential Nurseries. Um, she said that, um, that there was a time when she had a whole group of artist friends who used to go to KVCC and take classes there together so that they could use the studio space. And she said that when they did that, they just formed a really tight artist community where they were, and that they still have an amazing, um, friendship and friendship group from that, those experiences. And, um, she told me that she gets a lot of younger people who ask her, will you teach me how to do what you're doing? And she's like, I don't have the time and I don't have the ability. But as I heard that story, I started to think about what about the people, the creatives in this community, the next generations underneath her group who, um, may not have that same kind of, um, connection or friendship group or even a way to exchange ideas about how they do their art or to carry on the tradition in this community. And so as we talked together as a board, we came to the conclusion that for this next year, we would really like to focus on promoting the artists and the creatives in our community to really find out who's out there, what are they making, what do they need? And the reason why we want to do this is because we really feel that art builds community. When you think about, sometimes we get the idea that art is some kind of elitist thing that only a few people with PhDs can understand. But that's not what art is about. It's about building community and bringing people together. So the Vicksburg Cultural Arts Center is kind of like a matchmaker where we're bringing the creatives and the artists and holding them up in the community and bringing them together as a whole organization. So going forward this year, we'll be really focusing on developing our volunteer network. So we need all of the volunteers we can because I'm the only staff member. So this is Big Bird's Community Center for all of you. This is your arts, not my programs. So whatever the community wants, I'll help and support and organize it. But really, uh, Vicksburg needs to do the legwork to make anything happen. We'll be working on fundraising and fundraising and also lifting up the artists and the community. Um, we'll be having some of our main events, like our kids' arts camp is gonna be amazing this year. We've got seven different artists to engage with the kids. We have an Olympic theme, go for the gold. So it should be a pretty active and fun camp, and we still have about 20 slots. So if you know anyone who wants to sign up, they're eight to 12-year-old, they can go do it through our website. And of course, we always need volunteers, and we have seven kids who need scholarship help. If anybody wants to donate to help with that, they can do that website, too. Um, we have, they're real cute little kids. We hate to turn anybody away. So if you know anyone who wants to give anything between $10 and $150 to throw into our scholarship pot, we really need that. We're gonna be having our Tournament of Writers Celebration coming up in September. That's gonna be so fun because we have entries from ages five to 93. And I'm gonna try to get the five-year-old to read their, their thing. So we'll see if that works. But that, I'm like, I want that little kid to perform for me like a little monkey at that program. So we'll see how that goes. But that's gonna be on September 15th, so watch for that. And then the last thing I just wanted to point out is that we want to participate in any community event, um, because right now, since we don't have a space, you had to kind of like choose between me and the space. So thank goodness I won, but we we're gonna have, you know, any chance that we can to be in the Harvest Festival, the Christmas Parade, any kind of a thing where people are gathering. We want to be there being that matchmaker, connecting people with the arts at those, um, big events. And so that's my ask to you is if you have ideas about what Vicksburg needs, please let me know. And if you see any opportunities where, uh, the Vicksburg Cultural Arts Center can be plugged in to a gathering and be out there helping make those connections and helping you build the community relationships, we would like to be a part of that this year. So those are my asks to you, and I wanted to thank everybody, uh, for what I've seen so far as I've been meeting with people this last month. I'm so impressed by the community spirit in Vicksburg. So many people do so much to help and are, are so generous with their time. It's really been exciting to see everybody working together in Vicksburg. So thank you so much for giving us a little bit of time. Um, if you have anything you want to ask me now, you can, but I know you have a lot of important top secret business to attend to, so.
I, I do have one thing, Alicia. Uh, could you give us the best way to contact you?
Sure. You can easily always go to our website, you know, uh, uh, our Vicksburg Cultural Arts Center website is an easy place to, you know, contact us. But I also, my, um, email is alicia@vicksburgarts.com. And you see on the screen, it's spelled A-L-I-S-H-A, Alicia@VicksburgArts. And you can just text Sid. I know you all know how to get ahold of Sid, so you can always just text her and she'll get it to me.
So we have a, um, company phone number, uh, that is currently being forwarded to me, but here in the next couple of weeks, um, maybe around art camp time, we'll be transferring that, and then Alicia will have the company phone number. Uh, and that one is two six nine, two zero zero, two 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 three. Thank you.
You're welcome. That's on the website, too. So if you, you need to, you can look it up there.
We have any other, um, questions or comments of Alicia? Well, I know we will all get to know her, uh, as you were saying that you may, people may have met you. I think the majority of the heads on the screen were bobbing up and down. So, uh, you were very approachable, easy to talk with. I think I met you right out of the gate a couple of sat down and, and had coffee with you and understood your, you know, your desires and, and your needs and what you want to do for this community. So it's quite noble, Sid. Good job in bringing Alicia on, and, uh, I look forward to a great relationship with the, uh, cultural arts and the best of luck.
We're gonna have so much fun. It's gonna be great.
You are a passionate lady. I give you that, and that, that says a lot about what you do. So make it fun.
Yep. See you later.
Thank you very much.
More than welcome to stay on. We're, hopefully it'll be a short evening. We got through the budget process the last couple of months, so nothing top secret tonight.
Well, congratulations on your budget. That's a major achievement.
Yes. Yeah. Thank you very much, ladies. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, good evening. So that brings us to citizens' comments on agenda items or non-agenda items. I won't go into a lot of dissertation unless Mr. Mallory says there's that would like to speak.
We do have, uh, three people on the call. I believe all of them are based computers. So, and I think they all know how to raise their hand. Just move that magic cursor on top of the screen and you'll see down below it says racing. Click on it. And I'm pretty confident and all three are very aware how to do that. So I see no one with their hand raised. Mr. Frisbee.
All right, we'll move on to the approval of the general cassette agenda for the minutes of, uh, June 28th meeting. We have warrant reports, a total of $247,409.82. We have, uh, event rental request, a emo picnic lunch, the Vicksburg High School Theater at the Pavilion and the Saban Family Reunion at Sunset Park. And I don't believe there was any correspondence either, so everyone's had an opportunity to look over the, uh, our, um, meeting notes from our last June 28th meeting. If there's any questions or changes that needed, uh, let's bring it forward now. Um, hearing done, I would, um, ask for the council's desires and approving of the general consent agenda.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the general consent agenda.
Jenny, I'll second it.
Motion made by trustee Merrill to approve the general consent agenda, seconded by trustee Olson. Here are no further conversation. Roll call vote will be trustee Olson.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Keller.
Yes.
President Frisbee.
Yes. So we have an approved consent agenda. So we're on to, uh, village council action items. I trust y'all had an opportunity to see this. The Kalamazoo Avenue between Washington Street and Prairie Street. Now, I hadn't given this a lot of consideration myself, but Mr. Mallory's thought process in it. I, I totally agree. We're gonna have a brand new section of Main Street, Washington and Prairie. You know, why don't, why don't we just spruce up, uh, that section also of, uh, of Kalamazoo? Um, I think it's a great idea. The machines will be there. I think we won't have the typical call-out fees, uh, you know, locating the equipment and everything.
That's, that's correct. I've put the quote up on the screen share. We do not have the, the normal mobilization fee, so we save a little bit there. And, uh, you summed it up perfectly, uh, President Frisbee. In looking at what's going to be done, um, it made sense to do that one block length of Kalamazoo. If there was questions, why didn't we go further south? We did not want to lay asphalt on top of a sewer. As the council's well aware, we've had a couple of issues with that line in the sewer system, uh, in the last three or four years. It is being looked at, um, as a potential update in the 2324. So that's why we would stop it at the Washington Street intersection. The sewer heads eastbound prior, prior to hitting that.
Another thing that I think, um, is a really good idea because that portion of Kalamazoo Avenue is getting a tremendous amount of traffic right now. And so I think it's, it's getting, it's getting more than it would normally have, and I think it might, it does make sense to me.
Yeah, and just so you're aware of, uh, uh, it would be installed with the our anticipation is in the fall timeframe because we anticipate the majority of this work being done when Prairie Street is Prairie and Main are complete, uh, to lay asphalt during that whole time. And I, I think Mr. Olson was gonna ask something. I apologized and.
That, no, no, that's the question I was gonna ask is when you were planning on having it done.
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Anyone has any other comments or thoughts or questions in this regard?
Regarding the, any infrastructure that's below that section, there's no concerns about it. It's a newer, it's a newer section or there's there's, there's no issues with it to date?
Correct. We're, I don't want to jinx ourselves, but we're, we're
I'm not in wood, right?
Right. During that, um, section, uh, no, we're, we think we're good.
Okay.
No further discussion or questions, staff? Well, hearing done, I would ask of you, the staff is asking for an approval of $40,627.50. It come from the major fund, major road fund. The money is available. Uh, I think we all are in agreement that it would be a good idea to do it. So I ask of you what, uh, what the council's pleasure is.
If I can add one thing quick, I think important for the council and the public to know is that in this road work that we're doing, there's no general fund tax dollars being used. It's all state money and some of the USDA federal money related to the project. But, but no general fund tax dollars are being used in, in this construction season for roads.
Thank you, Jim. What would be the council's pleasure?
I saw move.
Seconded.
Trustee Reaster makes the motion to approve the village manager entering a contract with Reese Riley to complete Kalamazoo Avenue between Washington and Prairie Street in an amount not to exceed $40,627.50, and trustee Olson seconded that. Here are no further conversation or questions. A roll call vote trustee Keller.
Yes.
Trustee Olson.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Reaster. Well, mid-vote here, we're trustee Reaster.
Yes.
Apologize. I think my screen froze. Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
President Frisbee.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, all right, Jim. And it's, I, I commend you for that. Look, thinking of that and being, being proactive is a good idea. So thank you. And it's, I'll commend you for that. Look, thinking of that and being proactive is a good idea. So thank you.
Appreciate it.
So we're off to the village manager report. He wanted to give us an update on the infrastructure project.
Yes, today people were downtown. They certainly noticed a very large crane. We're setting a substructure into our storm sewer system. What this structure does is separate anything that should not flow out into the waterways. So the bottom of it will be a collection, whether that storm waters bring in debris from the street, oil, that type of material. That's what this, excuse me, this structure does. We're a little bit delayed due to the trucking. They were supposed to have everything arriving at 1:00 PM. It did not show up till 4:00. It was coming east to Toledo, Ohio. The crew from Milbacher is staying tonight to ensure that this area will be safe. And that structure I am anticipating will, I know it'll be completed because they're not gonna keep that crane overnight yet tonight. Prairie Street is getting its final prep. I know this morning, I do not know if they poured cement on some of the curb work that they're doing, but it's getting the final prep for the final prep for the curb work and asphalt pavement, which we're hoping the first layer of asphalt is put down yet this week. The restoration of yards up on Spruce Street and Pearl will be done as, as those spruce and pearl are definitely hopefully heading to the ninth inning of completion here. And as soon as this structure is in the ground, we anticipate in the next seven to 14 days, the storm sewer section on Prairie Street going back to division is completed as well. I'm gonna pause there for any questions.
I, I just, I do have one question. We had a harvest festival meeting today and we're talking about the wagon that takes people around. And if they, they would be able to use that Spruce Street route, correct, by that time?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Well, just like the good old days, just take them right down Main Street across the holes in the dirt, you know, just.
I don't think we're gonna do that.
Or so is like that. All right, I'm sorry. I interrupted Carl, I believe.
No, just, I wanted to let Jim be aware. They did, they did pour curbs and gutters to tie all that stuff in today. So.
Great.
Good, good. I was down there about 10:00 o'clock, so.
And they were, they were grading the road at 5:00 tonight, so.
That's exciting.
Yeah, I stopped by the nothing sitting in the hole. And there wasn't, there wasn't a body to be found. I don't know where they all went to. But then I got home and 30 minutes later Sue shows me a picture where they're sitting in a hole. So thank you. Thank goodness we were able to pull that off today. I know there's a lot of logistics involved.
Hey, Jim, it's Rick. Glad that Friday they are able to open up the tracks here on W Avenue. I think that's gonna help relieve a lot of the pressure in town and actually living out this way. The one, one thought I'm just curious about and seeing the heavy volume of traffic being rerouted, I'm just curious as relates to citations or any accidents or, or, or comments from the public. I'm just, is there anything you can comment as far as that's concerned?
Yeah, I'll have the chief prep here, but I'm unaware of any accidents. And I know our enforcement is not related to the construction, but I'll pass the baton to Chief Sanderson if there's anything he's aware of.
No, there's, there's, there's no trends that are leading to higher accident rates or anything like that. We're putting a lot of directed patrols out just to keep people slowed down, stop signs, the stop signs for a way that we, we put together there at Michigan and Washington. So we just continue to monitor it and be visible. But, you know, so, so far, so good.
I can just say that I am very grateful for that to be open because now Michigan Avenue is no longer a freeway.
Yeah.
And it's a huge difference. I mean, overnight, it was this huge difference. Because I mean, we had traffic on Michigan. Just, it was like a freeway. It was just constant. So it's back to normal. And I'm sure the people who use W are very happy also.
Yeah, and I think Julie Merrill just raised her hand here.
I was just, I was out on Washington Street and a huge dump truck, like a 10-yard dump truck, was at the intersection of Washington and Main heading east. And he decided to back up and he backed up into a car that was madly honking its horn. But because he was backing up, his vehicle was beeping, beeping, beeping. So it's just a comedy of errors. People just gotta give those construction guys room. And it's kind of hard. It's just Washington Street's been real crazy with activity.
Okay.
Nobody was killed. It was okay.
All right. But yeah, it's progressing good. And I think all, you know, we'll get a good indication on Prairie Street, all the way from Wilson, all the way into our downtown. Both sides of the road, new sidewalks, the walkability, all of Spruce Street, and certainly not minimizing the inconvenience or pain. But I really look forward to, to, to having all this updated above ground so people see it.
I'd, I'd like to say too, I talked to somebody who works at Family Fair, and she was extremely concerned because she said, do you think people are going to come back and shop here? And I said, absolutely, when it gets a little bit easier to get there. But I would just like to say to any public that's listening to this, please, please make sure that you frequent our businesses because they, they are having a real hard time right now. So please make sure that you are.
Thank you, Gail.
On the next point, I wanted, the latitude notebooks for the council have been ordered. Anticipate them either late this week, early next week coming in. We will be delayed a little bit due to, I mean, we'll get them before, in your hands prior to the August meeting. But we're going to have all of your emails set up on, on the notebooks by IT right and have that all ready to go once we have, have them on board. But, but they are, they are on their way.
Great.
Have the DPW building should begin construction here in the first 10 days of August. There'll be some prep work beforehand. I anticipate them being on scene here in the next week, meeting with Randy Skippers and myself just to begin the final excavation and prep. But it should take six to seven weeks after they're on scene. And once they're on scene, they complete the project before they move to the next. So that's moving forward and we'll start to see activity down at the DPW property. The, both the DPW position and police officer position have been posted. We have received multiple applications on the DPW position. And Chief Sanderson is overseeing. The police officers will advise a council that will be putting together a interview committee, which will consist of a council member, a member of the public, member of the business community, as well as staff for both of these positions to solicit their input as the candidates move through the process. We distributed to the council, I think it was last Friday or Saturday. Very fortunate, Richard Pyatt has approached the village and we, it's going to be doing a series of audio pad podcasts and reports on Richard Pyatt's show. The first one was on the village finances. We have a second one that's in the works on why to bring your business to Vicksburg. And they'll progress as we move in, into the fall. But we also posted that on social media. So we're asking the public certainly to listen to that link and ask them to share, share that wide and far as we can as the internet allows, just to get the positive vibe of Vicksburg out there. We do have contact, I believe, here in the next three weeks. The mural will be begun to be, the artist will begin his work on the building at the recreational park. You'll also see tomorrow the sign for the recreational park off Sprinkle Road will be installed, the new sign indicating the turn there off Sprinkle Road. And we're moving forward on the park signs and park rule signs as well as we've entered the new school year. So pause there and be happy to answer any questions council might have.
I, I did listen to the podcast and I thought it was very well done.
Absolutely. And we've got a couple of really good friends with Senator O'Brien and, and Mary Balkama. They've been steadfast supporters of this community from the very beginning. And, and they still, you know, talk very highly of this team and of Mr. Mallory. So that was, that was very good. And I'm really excited to see what they have to offer in the future. So would any, have anybody have any other questions for Mr. Mallory?
I just had a question. Is there any image of what that mural might look like at the recreation trail? Yeah.
Is, is there, I'm sorry?
Is there any image available of this, what the mural will be like?
I do not have it loaded on this, this laptop that I'm using. I don't know. Alex Lee, can you describe you are working?
I'm sorry, to describe what?
The, the, I know the artist was working on, our mission was to highlight downtown Vicksburg on the mural out at the rec park. I didn't know if the final rendering had been sent to us or not.
Yes, I can certainly get it. We presented one earlier. There were a number of comments. We incorporated those. So I can ask for a copy of that final rendering in a JPEG or PDF file that we can share.
Sure, thanks. We'll go ahead and have it available for the next council meeting. We'll put up.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just looking forward to my computer. I know I saw a picture of it like a month and a half ago or a month ago.
Yeah, that might be the older version. And then we received some input and utilized that input with the artist.
You're absolutely right. Thanks for that, Jim. Any other questions or comments for staff? Well, the next thing on the agenda is committee reports. I got the tree committee. And I just briefly wanna, wanna touch on that a little bit. Tell you who, who's been on the, on the committee. Some of you might know Michael Wanderland. He's a 43-year resident. He's active Rotary member. He's a business owner. He was a prior council member. He's seen a lot of the good times and a lot of the bad times in this community. But he ultimately has a passion that just, just can't be described. Especially when it comes to village managers. He, he, our village matters. He's got a lot of great ideas about life in general, but he's got a passion that is just really unbelievable. He recently gave a presentation to the Rotary on trees and the impact it has on the environment, on a community and people's livelihoods and health. It was quite, quite an interesting read. Steve Lang, the retired Portage Peace Officer. He was previously a forester out on the West Coast in California. You know, he knows, he knows trees pretty well. I think he was, we're very fortunate to find that gentleman. And Kelly Christiansen, she's a, works, teaches in the Vicksburg School System. She has led in the past the Vicksburg Outdoor Center, the VOC, working with early American plants and trees. So she's got a background in that area. And then, of course, our esteemed council lady, Gail Reaster. You know, she's got a love for Vicksburg, keeping it original, keeping the look and the feel of early, early villages. She's a great planner, a great organizer, and it's got a great vision, too. So I, I thought she was a good pick for the group. And intentionally, we just limited it to, to the four, maybe five, Mike and I are talking about it. But I think that's where we want to start to kick this off. And so, you know, they're, they're developing a plan and a strategy to establish the look of the 18 and 1900s in this village. As we all know, some of us grew up here, some of the areas you drive around, we have these beautiful stately trees. We've lost a lot of them in the last 10 to 20 years, a lot of beautiful trees. And we've never replaced them. So they're looking at just a strategy. I gave them some guidelines. There's some funding available with AEP, Michigan, Indiana Power. Consumers, too, but I'm not quite sure that they're willing to, to chip in when they don't service our village. But, you know, we just want to look at what we've taken down over the years, what we took down on this last, what we're doing now with the sewers and the infrastructure. And just look at, they've got some literature on proper trees for the location under wires, 20 feet away from the wires, what's natural to the area. There's some thoughts about considering a certain parts of the village, you know? Maybe that'll be the spruce trees. And then we'll have a maple tree section, maybe an oak tree section. But, you know, they're, they're, they're tasked with looking at it, giving us some recommendations, seeing what funding's available, and, and just help us with the, the general outlook, you know, in the community for the trees. So that's where we're at. They've had their first meeting and they're off and running. I, I know we'll hear from them pretty soon. For it. And by the way, this, we've had tree committees in the past. Mike Wanderland served on it. Was it 25, 30 years ago, Gail? It's, it's.
Yeah, it's been a long time.
A while. So this is not anything new to the village. I'd lie to what they're gonna do. They'll never see and live to appreciate it. But our generations to come will. And, you know, that's, that's what I want to leave behind, you know? Places that people love to visit, people love to live, just from the beauty. So with that, that's all I had in regards to the tree committee. So we have the fire committee. We have any updates, Mr. Olson?
Um, the only update I have is that we do have a meeting Wednesday night. We don't have cats down and it's okay. I'll give a report on that right now. There's about five or six things I gotta touch on. As many of you know, US 131 and XY Avenue is gonna be reconstructed. And one of the reasons right now for the push is the recent accident that killed Joel and Dolores Schaefer back there on May 7. They were struck by an SUV that was driven, being driven by a man from Saginaw, Michigan. That man was driving on suspended license and he was basically drunk. He, his blood alcohol, according to recent results, was .014. And he was doing 115 mile an hour when he slammed into that, their SUV and killed them. He's now been charged with two counts of second degree murder operating while impaired, causing death and two counts of operating while his license was suspended. There has been a warrant issued for his arrest. At last I knew, he is not in custody. So that's gonna be big news in this county. And it's all gonna be part of the US 131 rebuild from U Avenue all the way to Flowerfield Road. Metro Transit Millage is up for renewal November 2nd. Metro Transit will be making appointments to come down and speak with us and all the other communities concerning that, that millage. Kalamazoo Bike Club has several events coming up. And there's one coming up here in Vicksburg within the next month or so. And also they're teaching bike safety to kindergarteners in the Vicksburg School System. We're not gonna have a meeting in July, August. There's going to be, we'll be going back to the Metro Transit Building. City Kalamazoo's already gone back to regular meetings as of July 19th. And as some of you may know, Sprinkle Road is being worked on between Millam and Kilgore. So I want to know, the only major road in this county is not being worked on. And I think that might be Oakland.
Maybe.
Yeah. Lastly, John Gessler reported on our new courthouse. That's a $95 million project. And the county floated loans at a 2.18% at 2.18% for $75 million. And Calum Zoo County picked up the rest of $20 million in cash. I didn't know we had that much money. So, anyhow. That's about it. There is supposed to be a CATS meeting, but I think that has been canceled. I have not received official word on that yet. So. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Carl, was there an update on the, the fire in South County?
Sure.
A fire in South County?
The sewer. South County Sewer Authority.
I don't know about a fire in South County. I have no report because we don't meet until next Tuesday and I gave my report from the last meeting, our last council meeting, so.
Yeah, no, thank you, Carl. We just, we just put it all on the committee reports.
Oh, you're fine.
Appreciate it. So, this leads us to the conclusion here, close, well, village trustee time. Start at the top, Mr. Danny, trustee Olson, you have any words?
Just glad to see everything is going along good. I went down to the hole today and didn't see anything in. But the, the big complaint I heard was Calum Zoo Avenue, Prairie Street, would somebody please grade off the holes? But other than that, it seems like people are, are, are happy with the project. So, thank you.
I would concur with that. That, that is like a washboard. It's only about 50, 80 yards.
Yeah.
It's pretty bumpy. All right, trustee Keller.
Well, I, I got a call from a concerned citizen Saturday afternoon, to which I reached out to Jim. I texted him. I was actually up north with my grandson. So, I told the citizen I'd look into it. I hadn't been home since Thursday. So, I, we got all that rain. You know, I, I didn't realize what condition it was in, but I reached out to Jim. Jim responded to me, said it would be take care of first thing Monday morning. So, I appreciate that, Jim. Sorry to bother you on the weekend. But I am very glad to see that Prairie Street will finally have some blacktop down here in the near future. That'll be, it'll be nice to see. So, it'll be, it'll be welcomed by the residents in this area. So, so.
Trustee Reister.
Well, I would just like to thank, number one, Jim Mallory for following through. I, I had some huge concerns about Mill Street because I traveled that all the time to go to the gym and that kind of thing. And people were parking on that street and it was becoming impossible because that street was becoming such a passageway. And so, I asked him if they couldn't please put up some signs saying no parking on that street. And within the next day, it was all done. And then they also put the four-way stop sign on Michigan and Washington, and that has made a huge difference. So, I really appreciate the follow-through on that. Made it much safer.
Thank you, Ms. Gail. Trustee Merrill.
Someday this will all be over. This whole construction will just be so happy and, and it'll be good times again, but it's just growing pains.
Yes. Trustee Holmes.
Just to echo the comments regarding the big dig. The, the resiliency of, of the people in our community, I think, is one of the things I've come to appreciate. No matter what it is, it seems as if the folks here seem to covet us and get around something. Yeah, there's always that element, that negative element in the community that, that either didn't have enough hugs when they were kids or simply not enough sunshine coming through their doorway. But outside of those few people on Facebook, for the most part, I would say the people in the community are kind of, you know, realize what this is really all about. The, the one observation I just made, I just wanted to reflect on it, was that the tree committee, I, I noticed that there are no parks and rec committee members on that. And I wasn't sure if, if there was any effort to reach out to those folks or, or not because I know that there are some master gardeners that are on there. Now, whether or not a master gardener is a tree expert, I don't know. But again, just wanted to share that observation.
Trustee Wagner.
Just echoing what everyone else has said and really encouraging the public to get out there and support our downtown businesses during this time. I mean, even places like the Village Hideaway, who barely had a social media presence, have been really pounding it out. And they've got a lot of great response and engagement. And it's really encouraging to see the extra business that they've been able to generate that way. And I'm just really looking forward to getting everyone supported and making it through the big dig.
I have a question for you, Ryan. When are, when is the Village Hideaway open? Because somebody asked me if they were even open at all. So, when, what are their hours? Do you know what they are?
I don't know offhand, but they did just expand to lunch service because previously they had been open after lunchtime. But I know that they had added that, I think at least for the weekends.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Lunch is Friday, Saturday and Sunday. And they're either open at 3:00 or 4:00 P.M. the other days of the week.
All right, thank you, Jim. Because I, people were asking and I just didn't know what to tell them, so.
Excellent, thanks. So, it's on to my time. And, and to answer Mr. Holmes, that was, that was by intention. I, I don't want any other committee members, any other people with a vested interest in their, you know, little region of responsibility. Now, that's not to say that any recommendations or thoughts and ideas will be presented to those particular areas. Like, so if they have an area in Clark Park or some of the other parks, they, they think they're going to do a complete all the power lines, what, put a map together, what trees are where. And, and as it progresses, I expect they'll be reaching out to different committees within our subgroups. So, I just didn't want that conflict perhaps of somebody and, and, you know, the historic village saying, you know, we need, we need this over here. I guess this should come from this other group and make recommendations and we'll run from there. Gail said it earlier, you know, I can't, I can't emphasize it enough. And when we, when we're talking to people on Facebook, our friends, you know, encourage them to use the, the businesses downtown. Hideaway's got a back door. All theirs is right up the front. So, you know, I, I would encourage people if they, if they don't get to, get to like Chinese food and, and, you know, treat our businesses with the, the urgent need that, that we're all in. Like I had said, time again, you know, we planned this. We didn't plan the COVID and it's a double whammy for our businesses. So, I really, really encourage that. And lastly, the manager's performance review. We have one HR individual, our name's one, but said right now, but we're, we're lagging a little bit behind in document. We're just about ready. I would say probably Tuesday, Wednesday, I'll have the review forms in everybody's hands to put that together. So, that is, that is coming. And we already commented on the Richard Pyatt Show and, and that was, that was great. It's good news for the village. So. Unless anyone else has this thing on longer, I think we covered it all tonight. Entertained a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Trustee Reister. Trustee Reister second.
So, we have a motion by trustee Wagner, seconded by trustee Reister. It can be a voice vote. I will be staying on the call after the meeting. I think Mr. Frisbee's staying on the call as well. So, hearing a voice vote, all those in favor of closing the meeting, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed can express that by having it passed. Like I said, I'll be staying on the call with, with the Zoom open, Mr. Frisbee.
Thank you much. Thank you all.
Good night, everybody.
Good evening.